We're going to talk about why the PMP is important. We're going to go through the exam details, number of questions. We'll talk about prior to class, you really should consider starting your application to PMI. When you get in class, you'll be pretty busy. I have some suggestions for during class, some of the things that you can do to maximize your study time while you're in class, get the most out of class. Big deal is we'll talk about the styles of questions that you will expect to see on the exam. There are a lot of books out there on PMP exam preparation, some are spectacular, some are maybe not so good. But I want to give you the style of question that you will see on the exam and quote unquote, how I know that this is the style of the question you'll see on the exam. We'll talk about some test tips as far as taking the exam. If you need to retest, and some folks do, I do have some simple, important advice for you. And then we'll open it up to Q and A. So that's what we want to do. What is the exam about? Why do I want to take it? How do I get ready for it, et cetera? And then at the end, if you want to ask me just about anything about PMP, PMI, anything you like, I'm here to help you out. So anyway, off we go. Let's talk about why is the PMP exam important? These points come right off the PMI website. CIO Magazine ranked the PMP as the top project management certification in North America. The PMP has been around for a very long time. It is a very popular certification. Certain industries seem to gravitate more towards the PMP than others. But there are a lot of folks who find value in the PMP. In the chat window, for the sake of trivia, how many certified PMPs are out there running around nowadays? If you don't mind, take, take a guess in the chat window. How many certified folks are running around? Three thousand. All right, Joe, it's a good guess. Other folks? Give me something. What do you, all right, 150K. Two point three million. All right, PMI, approximately a year ago, there was the one millionth PMP. So there are a million folks who have gone through the exam and come out the other side successfully. So it's a pretty popular certification, not only North America, but it's very popular in other parts of the world. So India, China, there's a lot of demand for the PMP in various countries. It's just a big demand for it. The other thing that PMI advertised is the quote unquote median salary or for PMPs in North America is 25% higher than those without it. So PMI does a yearly study and what they'll look at is are you PMP certified? Yes or no? What industry are you in? How long have you been in the profession? And confidentially, what's your salary? And they have ranges for that. And they do have thousands of people answering the survey every year. And then they crunch the numbers. So their report is the salary survey. And you will find in the numbers that people with a PMP, excuse me, do tend to make noticeably more than folks who don't have the PMP. Now, of course, any survey, any statistics, you can challenge that and I understand that and that's fine. Sometimes the people that respond to that survey are people that are very familiar with PMI in the first place. And I think you could make an argument that people who are familiar with it are more likely to say, oh, yep, I'm a PMP and I want to share my information. But there are a lot of people that do respond to that survey. So anyway, that's some of the facts. The salary survey is not a confidential document. You could Google it, you'll find it, PMI posted on their website. And PMI, the PMP proves that you work smarter. It is not an easy exam. There's a lot of challenge to it. And so you really do have to know the material and that should give an indication that you at least have the foundational knowledge and the analysis skills to understand in certain situations, this is what I should do. These are the best practices that I've either learned or I apply daily on my projects. So that's why the PMP is important. Other individuals, and to give you different reasons, I, I live in the Detroit area, been here my whole life. And when times get tough, economic conditions are a little bit challenging. It is somewhat to moderately common that employers will say, we're looking for a project manager. PMP required or PMP preferred? And when employers get a hundred resumes, a thousand resumes, it's not uncommon for them to say, well, we only are hiring one person. We have a thousand candidates. They'll start with what certifications do they have? It's not a hundred percent of employers, but they'll go through and they'll say, all right, well, we've got 200 PMPs or 100 PMPs. And then they'll just go through those. And that's often the path of least resistance. Other organizations, they like to use it for marketing purposes. So they'll say, our organization is not only going to provide you with a great product or service, but you will have a PMP certified project manager leading the initiative. So some organizations will use it from a marketing perspective. And thus, some organizations will say your salary is tied to the PMP. So, so these are some of the various reasons. Why is PMP being utilized as an entry level position? I don't, oh, entry level? So is the question in order to get hired or entry level? Okay, so they, there is a marketing clout that the PMP has. The PMP, see if this answers your question, please let me know if it doesn't. But the PMP has had a reputation for 20 plus, 25-ish years. It's a very challenging exam. And so in my opinion, and in the opinion of certain hiring organizations, HR departments, if somebody has a PMP guaranteed, they've been in the profession for a certain time, and we'll talk about that in the next half a dozen slides. So they know they're getting somebody with the experience because you can't apply to take the PMP without it. And that tends to increase the likelihood that they'll get a project manager who has the requisite skills. All right, so does that make sense? Does that answer your question? So experience will never trump a PMP cert. Thank you for asking. It absolutely depends. So many organizations will look equally at your certification. Actually, a lot of them will look more at your experience. They'll look at your success criteria. That's certainly going to be important for them. But you can accept or reject my logic, but when HR folks get a thousand resumes, it's very unlikely they're going to read everyone, interview every person. So sometimes it's the path of least resistance. So they'll find, all right, we got 100 people who have PMPs. Let's look at their experience. So certainly your experience is important, your success is important. But I think you'll find that the PMP opens additional doors. I've worked with hundreds and hundreds of people in the Detroit area when economic times are not so good. And people will say, I applied for X number of jobs, nobody ever called. I got my PMP and my response rate from these organizations went way up. Perhaps you'll have the same experience, perhaps not. My pleasure. Thank you for asking. All right. So those are some of the reasons that you should consider getting your PMP. It's also pretty easy to maintain. So let's talk about the exam. That is a big reason why we're here. PMI publishes a document called the ECO, the Exam Content Outline. And that's just the blueprint of the exam. It's available on PMI.org. It's, it's a very widely published document. PMI wants to minimize the surprises people get when they take the exam. So the ECO will tell you these are the areas where you will get test questions. Every question on the exam has to fit in one of those particular buckets. So the buckets are people, process and business environment. So those are referred to as the domains. There are three domains on the exam. As you can see, here are the percentage of questions that you should expect to get. So the people, so domains are essential PM knowledge areas. I'm being brief. People domain, you should know about how to collaborate with stakeholders, how to train stakeholders, how to empower team members, how to resolve conflict, those types of things. The process domain, half the exam is primarily the PMBOK Guide, sixth edition. That will change and it's not, it's not completely PMBOK Guide sixth edition, but a lot of it is. So processes like, I know what a charter is. I know the, the value of a charter. I understand the techniques to estimate costs and time. I understand the concept, the process of changes and making changes and what should be changed and what shouldn't through formal processes. So half the exam is process. And then the balance is the business environment. Examples, projects don't operate in a vacuum. There's a reason that projects are done and the business environment can change in a dozen different ways, a hundred different ways that may require the project to be altered, reduced, or even perhaps eliminated. So keeping your eye quote unquote on the business environment is an important part of being a project manager. You can't simply get your project approved. That's a five-year project and march forward without considering the environment in which you operate. So anyway, those are the three domains. Within each domain, there are multiple tasks. These are just the underlying project management responsibilities. So as a really quick example, in the people domain, two of the tasks are, you should know how to manage conflict. You should know the best practices when it comes to conflict, the types of conflict resolution strategies, et cetera. And when it comes to leading a team, you should understand there's, there are different leadership styles. Different leadership styles are appropriate for different environments, different types of projects, different organizations as a whole. So things like laissez faire leadership versus transactional leadership, et cetera. Those are the things that we talk about. So that's where the test is coming from. A big deal is the test used to be more process oriented. But starting January of, last January, they really changed it a lot. So in the past, we used to say PMBOK Guide, PMBOK Guide, sixth edition. You absolutely need to know the PMBOK Guide inside and out. And that was generally worked for most people, most of the time. That's not the case anymore. So a lot more on the people aspect and business environment was there the whole time. So lot more focus on people. So that's the basic idea behind the exam content outline. All right, lots of stuff to look at on this slide, but allow me to briefly go through the slide. There are two exams, the PMP, which of course we're talking about here. Then there's another one called the Certified Associate in Project Management. Let's just come back to that later. But the PMP is 180 questions, different types of questions, and you have 230 minutes to take the exam. Minor, if you're in a test center, you can still take your test to a test center, assuming that they're open with COVID conditions. Then it's 230 minutes period. That's the, you got 180 minutes for, uh, 230 minutes for 180 questions. If you take it proctored online, where you have a camera and a microphone, just like we have here, then you still get 230 minutes, but in addition to that, you get an extra two 10-minute breaks. Minor, but when you get a break, it'll say, if you're about to take your 10-minute break, you will no longer be able to go back and check any of your answers. And you'll go, okay, and you'll click that button and then you're fine. So the minor stuff. So the price. The price to take the exam is $555. It's a pretty pricey exam. If you're a PMI member, it's $150 less. But I'll be darned to become a PMI member. It's $139 to be a national member. And then another 10 to $30 to join a local chapter if you choose. So if you become a PMI member, it does give you some additional resources, like you'll get electronic copies, PDF copies of the PMBOK Guide, sixth and seventh edition, you get a variety of resources. And if you need to retest, the retest fee is less expensive. So PMI positions it, that you really should become a PMI member because you get a bunch of benefits and the cost is within $10, $20-ish of what you're going to pay anyway. So I do recommend it, but it's not mandatory. It's absolutely up to you. All right. So here's kind of the big point. You do have to submit your experience to PMI of your experience leading and directing projects or leading and directing project efforts. So if you have a secondary degree, all that means is high school diploma, GED, associate's degree, you're still in the secondary category, global equivalent of high school, um, high school diploma. You need to say 60 months, I've had, I have 60 months of experience over the last eight years. I will get into more detail on that on the very next slide. But you need to cover 60 months of the last eight years times 12 months. If you have a four-year degree or higher, then you need only 36 months of experience in the last eight years. If you have a GAC, a globally accredited something, then in the chat window, oh, there's a couple of questions that popped in. Give me a moment. Does anybody have a four-year degree, master's degree higher in project management? That's not very common. And the tips for those studying the sixth edition now have to translate. So Jesse, thank you for, for passing that along. Yes, I do. Yes, I do. So let me kind of jot that down. Sixth add to now. Place new version. Allow me to, to read. There's something in the chat window. Permit changes leadership. Having the current study guide, only the differences. All right.
Thank you for submitting those questions. Everybody getting them on Facebook. Jason, we just sent that over to Dr. Salt and think he'll take it from there.
Okay, so the, if you do have a four-year degree or higher in project management, which is not very common, then you only need 24 months of experience. One out of 100 people I meet have that. So anyway, 60 months or 36 months and you need 35 hours of training. Project management training, the PMP that is offered by New Horizons, I'll be darned. 35 hours contact hours of training. So you're golden with that. If you do have 35 hours contract, contact training in the past related to project management, you, you can apply for the exam. Of course I'm biased, but you need project, you need PMP training for the current version. The exam changes kind of dramatically every four years. So therefore, uh, I strongly recommend that you get PMP training on the newest version. All right. So let me kind of dot some i's and cross some t's. If you were studying the sixth edition, uh, how are you supposed to get ready for the new version? I hope my answer is, is straightforward. Get the new book that maps to the new exam. So the new books, and there are a lot of them online, there are a lot of them through Amazon. Just make sure they say seventh edition. And as you go through those, you'll see a much reduced focus on PMBOK Guide processes. There, there was a phrase, if you've gone through sixth edition or earlier, ITOS, input tools and techniques and outputs. I, I hope that you don't shudder when I say that, if that brings back bad memories, but that's not a focus of the new exam. The, the focus of the new exam is concepts. Not which of the following is a, uh, an input of the process estimate cost. It just, you're not going to get that. So it's much more on concepts. You'll see, I've got a question for you in a few slides. So that's the, my reply to Jason's question. You can let my, let Jesse know that, that answered your question. All right, Nicole, you had a question on curious changes, uh, that was replaced, primary changes focus on leadership. The answer is, well, that's, that's absolutely right to an extent. The, but the answer is, the, the better answer is there's much more of a focus on people. So leadership is certainly going to be a part of that umbrella. What are the leadership styles? Because you're leading a team. But there are a lot of other things like managing conflict. You get more probably, get more questions on managing conflict. Empowering stakeholders. How do you do that? What are some of the best practices? When should you empower stakeholders? Those types of things. Training, training is a bigger focus because it's a people subject. So again, people is 42% of your exam, leadership is part of that. So Nicole, that's the answer to, I hope, the first half of your question. The other thing, is there a study guide, only the differences? Or just the same materials in the new version? I'm sure there are differences. There's, there are documents out there of what's changed respectfully. They're not going to help you. Because you need the newest materials for the new exam. You're going to need a book that will actually go through and say, related to training, here the five, 10, 15 things that you need to know. You won't find that on the kind of the shorter documents. So I would keep it as simple as I possibly could. Consider getting an updated book. Start with that. All right. And military personnel, how do we transcribe our projects from our service or what does that look like? Got a slide for that. Glad you asked. I'll make an excellent segue. All right, friends. So here's the deal. These are the, the in-depth details on the exam. Here's a fastball. Oops, I don't have this experience. Okay. You can take the CAPM exam. It's designed specifically for folks who don't have the, the requisites as of today. All you need to take the CAPM exam is 23 hours of project management education or 1500 hours of project experience, either or. Same thing, CAPM is going to be a challenging exam. CAPM is primarily based on the sixth edition PMBOK Guide. So definitely, if you want to pick up a book, I, I think it's very high risk. Excuse me, if you just have 1500 hours-ish of project management experience and you walk into that exam, you will respectfully, you're, you're going to get hammered because there are going to be all kinds of PMBOK Guide sixth edition. I have no idea. I've never seen that. So anyway, that's my recommendation for that. All right, let's keep driving. Okay, Nicole, I'm, thank you. I'm glad I was able to answer it. All right, let's talk about the experience and how that works. There's always a lot of questions on this. There used to be all kinds of hours of effort that you needed to document. So it was not only months of experience, it was hours of effort. And certain versions of the application were really detailed. How many hours did you spend creating a charter? How many hours did you spend identifying stakeholders? People had no idea. So they were taking their best guesses. PMI has stepped back and they just keep it simple. So here's the scoop. We have overlapping projects here. Project one starts on January, runs through beginning of April. Project two overlaps from February through the beginning of April. So we have a two-month overlap. Here's the fastball. Project one, when you document that in the application, it'll go, okay, this is fine. You get credit for the entire time period, which is not a surprise. For project two, you can enter this in your application. It will only give you credit for the new areas. So for this one, project one ends at April-ish. And so from here to here will all count. So you can't just simply say, I worked for six months on 75 projects and that's plenty of experience to go, uh, all right, it's only six months. You need more than that. So overlapping projects are fine. But you'll only get credit for new areas. You can let me know if you have questions on that. All right, let's talk about the application process. Consider becoming a PMI member. Then you create an account. I'll show you where. Complete and submit your application of PMI. PMI will review it. It, they're very fast. They're amazingly fast. It usually takes five days or less to review it and then they'll give you an answer. They do say it's up to two weeks, but they're amazing. Like I can't imagine how many folks they have reviewing these things. Then they're going to ask for payment. The millisecond you make payment, you will, it's binary. You will be audited or you won't be audited. It's just one of those two things. So if, if you get audited, it's not something you documented or failed to document. It's just random. So you were the unlucky lottery winner. So if you're audited, the instructions are pretty clear. They'll say, all right, you've been audited, you documented five projects for your experience. You need to find a human being for each one of these five where, that will say, who will say, yeah, yeah, these months look accurate, the job description looks accurate. So before you submit your application, consider who could validate your hours if you're audited. But they're not going to call these people. They're not going to send out the FBI to talk to these people. It's just, here's what you said. Who would verify this? The rest of the instructions for the auditor are right. The minute you're audited, you'll get the instructions. I was audited when I took the, uh, a different PMI certification. I just knew in advance I might be audited. So it was, it delayed the process by a week-ish. But you just, that's the audit. And then maintain your certification. Maintain your certification is pretty easy. You need, and you don't have to write any of this nonsense down. It's easy to maintain your certification. You need 60 professional development units, PDUs every three years. It's very easy to get your PDUs, in my opinion. If you take project management training, generally get one PDU per hour of training. If you attend PMI meetings at the local or the national chapter level, you get PDUs because they're going to be guest speakers. If you, you ready for this? Run projects. You actually get credit for your real world experience. You get up to 15, if my memory is perfect, out of your 60 hours just for managing projects, just for doing your job. And it's pretty, in my opinion, it's pretty inexpensive to renew your PMP. I think it's 150 bucks every three years. It's pretty cheap compared to some of the other certifications that I've held. All right, so you need to submit your application and here is my encouragement. I would do this before you enroll in the class. Now, your, your application will be good for 90 days. So I do recommend that you start your application before you walk into class. Because while you're in class, you're going to be kind of overwhelmed. There's just so much information to go through. So you go out to PMI.org. Their website is really good. They've made massive improvements in their website over the last three or four years. You go out to PMI.org, the very first link on the left is certifications. When you click that, I'll be darned. It's right here. You click on PMP, you'll see a giant blue button that'll say, apply for the PMP. You start putting your application details together. If you want to become a PMI member, right next to certifications is the membership link. And one of the links will be, become a PMI member, join PMI, something like that. So they really have set up their website because so many folks want to get the PMP. So it's, it's all right out there. All right. Submit your application on the very last day of class. Do you have to do that? No. But I would, because you want to take the test as soon as possible. When you submit your application, you're not agreeing to a test date. You're just submitting your application. So if you submit it on the very last day of training, which you can, PMI will get it in a week or so later. They'll give you the, the green thumbs up. Assuming they don't have any questions for you. You can't submit it prior to the class unless you already have your 35 training hours. So on the final day of your PMP class, assuming you take it at New Horizons, that's your 35 hours. Submit it. That's my strong recommendation. So use whatever phrase you like, strike while the iron is hot. Make your mission if you're a military person. Hey shiny thing, by the way, I, many years ago, I was, I was in the army and I was actually stationed and did some training at Fort Wachuka. So I see that a lot of Tucson, Sierra Vista folks. So hello to you. All right, let's talk about how to document the application. There's a question on, let me come back to that percentage of questions on the exam that change every four years. Please let me come back to that. Just don't let me forget. Describing your experience, here is my suggested way to document your experience. You want to make it as easy for the PMI reviewer to look this over and go, they're a project manager, and then you move on. So I know there's a lot to look at here and, but here's the general idea. A short sentence on what did you do? And why did you do it? What was the purpose of the project? So you can say, assuming this is all accurate. I led a team of five people, 500 people, a million people to create a product, to improve a service. And you can describe very briefly what that product or service was. To build, we built a bridge, we created a software application, we migrated to cloud computing. We updated a process. We something, so something temporary and unique. They don't need the details. They respectfully, they don't care. So if you say, I replaced an old bridge, demolished an old bridge and built a new bridge. 99 out of a, oh, okay, 999 out of 1,000 people go, oh yeah, that's a project and you'll be done. I created, led a team to create a new software application for the billing department, the accounting, the HR department. 999 of 1,000 people go, I understand that, that's a project. Okay, then, like a resume, really short PMI phrases that are realistic, that you actually did on the project. I identified stakeholders. I created the schedule. I created the work breakdown structure. I led the team to create the cost estimates. During the project, I processed change orders. I reported status. I led them through corrective action. Really short phrases that PMI will recognize. And when I say things that PMI will recognize, if you've read the Pemba guide, some folks have, some folks have not, just phrases read out of that book. They're going to recognize those things. If you do get your new exam prep book, you can look it over and go, I didn't do that. Oh, I did that. Short phrase, did that too. Short phrase, keep it simple. And then at the very end, consider a single sentence of how to go. How was the project? We achieved our revenue goal. We achieved our defect. We improved the process by 5%. We reduced costs by 5%, assuming that you know that, assuming that the project is done. If it's not done, you can just say something as simple as, project is currently underway, currently on schedule, within budget, hitting quality customer expectations. Short, simple stuff. Things to avoid, like the plague. Don't use the word program. Program in PMI language, just please believe me, is not the same as a project. So even if you were a program manager, but it was a single, unique, temporary endeavor, a unique product or service, use the word project. Briefly, a program manager, PMI, is, this is somebody who is in charge of two, three, four, or 100 project managers working on a much bigger initiative. PMI has a different certification for program managers. So briefly, if you've been a program manager, you really have to specify for each project, what was your role on that project? And it'll be typical things, maybe, like wrote the charter, oversaw massive, major changes of scope, received and interpreted reports from the project manager, determined whether the project should continue, evaluated benefits as they came in. So what was your, if you were a program manager, got to drill down to the project level. Don't say operations. PMI, the minute they see operations or maintenance or phrases like supported a product in the production environment, they'll push back. They'll go, operations is, can be very difficult. Operations is mission critically important. It's not a project. So if you were to say, I supported 1 million servers and laptops and maintained and ensured the security. They'll go, that's an operations position. Respectfully, that's not a project management position. The project management positions were created and updated and redesigned the XYZ. So if you were part, if maintenance operations was part of your job, okay, great. But what projects did you do? What new stuff was rolled out? That's what they're looking for. So don't say operations, don't say maintenance, don't use the phrase supported 1 million. They'll, they will probably push back on that. So that's the basic idea behind your application. So there was a question about, well, what about military projects? How do we work with that? I promise you, it's the same. As a, an engineer, built a bridge, built a school, built a sewer system. As a officer, sergeant, NCO, taught new skills to the team, helped roll out and train new equipment, moved our location from point A to point B, helped craft a unique plan to mobilize and deploy troops here. If you say, I helped mobilize 1 million people over 10 years, they'll go, that's operations. The first couple of times is a project. So anything my, my military friends, anything that was temporary and unique, they'll take it. They'll take it. So there was a question, what's the percentage of questions on the exam that change every four years? It's a fair question. It's going to be different every year and PMI is very tight lipped about the exam. So we don't get to know, we simply get to know, there's a new exam. So ballpark, the, the people domain of the exam is very big now. And some of it was already in there, just not a lot. So at least 30-ish percent of the exam is probably new, at least. But again, get the new book. You don't have to worry about it. And the good news is, if you get the new book and you've already been through training for the last version, you go, oh, a charter, yeah, yeah, I know what that is. Nothing new, nothing new. Identify stakeout, yeah, yeah, that's nothing new. I understand all that. Your test time, your study time will be a lot shorter. All right, so that's my suggestion for filling out your application to minimize, to maximize the likelihood that they'll look at your application and go, you're golden. You can, we'll let you take the exam. All right, during class, let me kind of preface the next couple of slides with, if you take six months to get ready for the exam, you won't be ready for the exam. It's way too long. You're going to lose track. You're going to lose focus and you will have forgotten the vast majority of things that the instructor talked about. So singleness of purpose to the best of your ability. If you want to make it your mission, if that's what you want to call it, focus on the mission, study and take the exam. So try to ignore all mission, non-mission critical work during class. Evenings after class, after you, of course, relax for a little bit, hit the books. This is my suggestion to test as soon as humanly possible. All right, friends, here's my perfect world. Please notice this phrase, this is the perfect world test schedule. So the perfect world test schedule is during your class, your weekend class, you're studying in the evenings. The weekend after, you're studying six, eight hours a day. The week after class, you're not working. You've taken that week off, not so you can enjoy a frivolous vacation. That's foolish, because you're studying six to eight hours a day. That's where the fun is. You also study the following weekend. You'll probably be approved to take the exam somewhere in here. And then the next Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday or so, take the exam. This is the perfect world scenario. Your odds are incredibly high of passing the exam if you can do it in that. Because you're ignoring work, you're ignoring family and those pesky obligations, singleness of purpose. This is the perfect world test schedule. You can be, you can be done with a test in 10 or so days. All right, here's the almost perfect world. You're studying after class and each weekend, you're studying four to eight hours a day. On weekdays, you're studying an hour or two each day and take the test within a month. That's the almost perfect world. That will give you a really good chance of passing the exam. Because you can make up the math as you go along. But that's probably going to be 40 to 80-ish hours of studying, somewhere in there. That's enough. People who make it past a month, they start to, their, their scores tend to dip. People who delay more than a couple of months, hmm, not so good. Little bit hit and miss. I get it though. Please hear me, as, as a professor, I know, I know, you must focus on nothing else but my course. I get it. I know, I know. But if you wait four, five, six months, your likelihood of, of taking the exam is very low. I've just, I've met so many people over the years, they'll just go, I'm too busy. Wait, I'm going to study the minute this project is done. And then there's another project. Then there's some fun, family stuff. I understand. But if you wait three, six, seven months, you probably won't even take the test. And if you do, the odds are not really in your favor. People who wait six months usually don't, often don't pass. That's happy. So happy, take it within a month. Take it within a month. All right, there's a question. Good way to quantify the intangibles for experience. A lot of military projects tend to focus on improving morale. I do like that and PMI will accept that. So morale is one of the more, you're right, one of the more qualitative measures. So I would present it in just that way. To improve morale of troops stationed here with the goal of, it, it's not rocket science. Improve morale, military folks with higher morale do their jobs better, they're more successful. So that, I, PMI is going to know that. To improve morale for people stationed here, we designed and developed a program project, sorry, that included X, Y, and Z. As the project manager, determined the scope, estimated cost, determine logistics, resources to get the things that we need. At the end, if that, I'm making it up, evaluated morale using a survey, which may not be realistic, but that's the general idea. Morale will be fine on the exam. There are other kind of squishy metrics and drivers for projects like, I strove to improve customer satisfaction. Because the idea behind that is happier customers buy more stuff. They're more loyal. I did a project for the HR department to improve employee morale in public or private organizations. People with high morale stick around, their turnover is less as well. So that, Jason, that's my answer to that. If I were PMI, I would go, oh, sure, that'd be fine and dandy. Please let me know if that answers the question. All right, so that is that here, my friends. It's quite a question. Here's what I'll do. I'll give you 60 seconds to look this over. Now, my goal is not to educate you on this subject matter. It's to show you the type of question you're going to get. So take your time, I'll give you 60-ish seconds. This is the style of question that is very common on the exam. They're sometimes referred to as application level questions, analysis questions. But very briefly, in class, we talk about, if you have teams, separate teams bought, they're working on the same product. You need to have a lot of integration between those two teams. You need to have a lot of communications between those teams. Because what it says right on the, in the question is, one team can really affect, the work of one team can affect the work of other teams. We also talk about the risks, how that poses a risk to project success. So there's three different topics really blended into this one topic. So this one says, communicate, have them communicate with each other, identify conflicts. That really means identify the risks related to this and monitor. This is a proactive approach. That's why it's a happy answer. This one is do the work in series. One team does a piece of work and then the next team, you can do that. But that has a 99% chance of delaying the schedule. So it's probably not an optimal answer. It's not a horrible answer, it's not optimal. Resolve conflict as they occur. Well, that's a reactive approach. And PMI makes the point in the books, proactive is always better than reactive. And this one, maybe you got to chuckle out of this one, this one's a horrible idea. So just, you know, prance along delightfully. And any things that have problems, we'll figure that out at the testing level. That's a horrible idea. You're going to have chaos. The only worst answer would be, don't test it at all and release it to the customers and they'll let us know the problems. So anyway, that's the style of question. They're hard. Lot going on. All right, we need to sort of start wrapping it up pretty soon. Authorized PMI, PMP course materials. PMI has released their own book finally on PMP exam prep. So getting an authorized book with authorized questions is a good place to start. New Horizons does offer my resources. My organization is Pinnacle Professional Development. So I've created an exam simulator that has over 300 questions directly from PMI. And about 1,000 questions grand total, plus another couple of hundred questions that are separate, that are in the book as well. That's plenty of practice questions. So that's the basic idea. There are a lot of different PMP exam prep books out there. As mentioned, some are better than others. The one that I prefer is the one that PMI wrote. Otherwise, respectfully, the authors are guessing what topics are on the exam. PMI knows what topics are on the exam. They point out those specific areas. All right, horror, you need to retest. You didn't pass the first time. Yep, you are, you have to be a member to utilize your 300 questions? No, thank you for asking. The answer is kind of a little more pointed. I offer these, if you take the class through New Horizons, which we hope you do, you will receive my bank of practice question as part of your enrollment. So that's, oh, then you should, ignoring the finer points unless, I don't know, there's a lot of New Horizons. Perhaps you didn't receive access to them. That's just going to be based on what center you're in. If you didn't, you know, reach out. All right, if you don't pass, horrible, then immediately start writing down, go, you know, go to a McDonald's, go to a Starbucks, write down everything you can remember. Please let me throw a fastball at this. If you are like most people, you go, I'm, I'm kind of angry about this, I'm kind of depressed about this. I'm going to let it sit for a couple of days so I can get my head together and then I'll readdress. Sure, you can do that. Don't do that. You're going to forget what you saw on the exam. You're going to start misremembering whether you saw the question on the test or in one of the practice questions you got. You need to do that. I strongly, strongly recommend immediately write down everything you can remember. You're not going to get the same questions, but you're going to get the identical topics. Do that immediately or that's my suggestion. And then And then reschedule within 10 days. For the love of all that's holy, don't reschedule it 40 years downstream when you've had the, you'll never retake it. Just make it happen. Just get in there. Yell and, you know, kick the trash can at your house and then take the exam within 10 days. If you do, when? When you pass the PMP, celebrate, add the PMP credential to your various documentation, celebrate some more. And then if this is your nature, gloat over your friends who have not gone, yet gone through the PMP exam. That's half the fun in life. So anyway, that's all I got to say about that. We're going to start wrapping it up. I can stick around and answer any questions that you've got. Trouble with the curve? Yeah, okay. I understand that reference. I'm here. What can I do for you? Questions, comments? Is there a way that the PMP will be saturated like other certs? That's always an issue. But it's such a hurdle to get over. You need the experience. The test is brutal. I think that's what's kept the PMP quote unquote, not saturated for 25 plus years. If they make the test easy, okay, then you have a billion PMPs and it is what it is. I don't think so, but that's my opinion. Other questions? You betcha. Glad, thanks for asking.
Checking out the other streams, Dr. Sock. I don't see any other last minute questions over on Facebook. Jason, thanks for all your questions throughout. We appreciate that. Let's go over to LinkedIn, YouTube. If you have any questions, go ahead and get them in the chat. We'll hang out for another three minutes here as we wrap up. But thanks again. Dr. Sock, did you have any other final parting words?
I do thank you for spending the hour with us. I wish you great success.